Okay. I'll call this meeting to order at 6:02 PM. No. Oh, oh, sorry, six o'clock PM. And so go ahead and get started with city and county of Honolulu monthly reports, starting with Honolulu Fire Department. Okay. Uh, Honolulu Fire Department is not here, so we'll go ahead and jump to Honolulu Police Department. Is anyone from Honolulu Police Department here? Okay. Uh huh.
They're not here either.
No. And I heard supposedly we, um, Lieutenant Segucio got promoted?
Yeah.
Um, so, so in theory, we might be getting someone else eventually. Uh, so I guess I gotta reach out and figure out that one. Okay, and next up is Board of Water Supply.
See a water drop.
Oh, yeah. Michelle Harmon here with your Board of Water Supply report. Um, this month I have one main break reported for January 20th, 20th of this year. It was a four inch pipe and the address was 2345 Mauna Laha Road. Um, so that's the only one I have on that one. And for our general water announcement, we just liked to share with everybody our water waste reporting, um, methods. So a really great place to go if anybody wants to report a broken pipe, malfunctioning sprinkler, running faucet, excessive watering or any other water issue, uh, they can go to www board of watersupply.com slash water waste. Um, and that has a ton of information, really helpful next steps and contact numbers. Um, we also can have emails going to contact us at hbws.org or folks can call 808-748-5041. And that's all I have for you today, so I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, Richard?
Uh, yes, hi. If we want to have a Los Angeles type, Altadena type thing, how long will our water last in say if every fire unit was out there at hydrants sustained fighting this situation like that? Do we have any kind of study or information on that?
Um, that's a great question and I'm gonna definitely have to get back to you later on that one, if that's okay.
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, seeing no other questions from board members, I'll turn it over to any, any questions from attendees? Nope, seeing nothing. Uh, I guess, Michelle, if you don't mind putting the email and the, uh, URL that you talked about for, um, water waste in the chat. And thank you very much.
Hey, thank you. See you all next time.
Yep, see you next month. Okay, and moving on to board business and presentations. Uh, first up, we have filling of three vacancies in Sub District One and two vacancies in Sub District Two. Uh, is there anyone interested in filling those vacancies? Okay, seeing none, we'll move ahead to approval of written summary for video record, uh, Thursday, January 16th, 2025. Do we even have quorum? Uh, I don't think so. Six. Okay. Okay, yeah, we'll circle back to that if we wind up getting quorum. Uh, next up, Nice Neighborhood Committee Report, Harris.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Uh, speaking to the mic, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. Just wanted to, uh, follow up. Our next meeting is set for, uh, Monday, February 24th, 2:00 PM. Uh, on the agenda that we have is follow-up items will be on 1427 Ernest Street in terms of illegal drug activities, negative impact on residents in the neighborhood. We also have a follow-up meeting with the residents and the, uh, management company with 1427 Ernest Street on Saturday, March 1st. Uh, the other item, uh, was a new item brought up, uh, at 1111 South Berry Canister Street, which is the commercial establishment, uh, where First Hawaiian Bank Makiki Banking Center is. Uh, we'll be following up with them on the homeless encampments, illegal drug activities, hygienic, uh, concerns and negative impact on their businesses there, which includes the bank, uh, Petco and Walgreen. Uh, we followed up on 1011 Palm Drive with Nancy, uh, Tipicolo Zuani. And, uh, it was tied to the bar adjacent to her property, which was the Tipsy Pig Two. Uh, communication has been made with the, uh, liquor commission and their enforcement groups, uh, will be attending our meetings, so there's a additional follow-up on that. And that's it for, uh, the Nice Neighborhoods Committee. And we look forward to, uh, people joining us, uh, next Monday. Thank you. Any questions?
Okay, seeing none, uh, we'll go ahead and move on. Thank you very much, Harris. Uh, to the presentation with, well, okay, I see the core, core member is not here. We might, they might be getting let into the building. Um, we're, I'll just call a short recess to allow folks to come in.
Ian Santi told me he's coming to the march.
A what, something?
Marching? Uh, did you say the marching or the February?
Marches.
Oh, well, that's my bad. Yeah. Yeah.
No, the TM.
Oh, that was not the one I had.
They don't want to be.
Right, oh.
And the deputy.
And everything else.
Well, there you go. Okay.
We'll see what happens.
It's about this flying by.
I know.
Right.
I know. Yeah. The years. Yeah, like. Yeah. Yeah. Yes. No, we passed that and we got. Wrong form, but I guess they're supposed to refresh next month, not this month, so.
Here's my fun little riddle. As we get older, things tend to slow down.
Another thing.
Faster as you get older.
We get drafted, we get drafted.
Okay, I'll go ahead and call us back from recess. Okay, call to order at 6:08. Okay. Right, and, uh, so I made a mistake and Core is not showing up this month. It'll show up next month, hopefully. Uh, so I'll go ahead and move on to, uh, let's hear the presentation of Early Eviction Mediation Program by Special Programs Innovator Roberta Hickey Gomez.
Yeah, EM. Thank you so much, um, for welcoming me here tonight. I really appreciate it. I'm from the Mediation Center of the Pacific. We really specialize in empowering people to find their own solutions. So we bring people together who are in some sort of dispute. My particular program is around early eviction mediation. And that's early eviction mediation prior to going to court. So pretty much anytime anyone is in slight arrears, um, there's some issue between landlord and tenant prior to getting to court, trying to resolve that as expeditiously and quickly as possible. So I have a presentation here. You can go to the next slide. So a little bit of the history and background of the program. The program launched in 2021. It was part of Act 57, which was coming out of the eviction moratorium for COVID-19. Our initial target was about 66,000 tenants, uh, in arrears in Oahu. We had successes of about 1,300 out of 3,000 cases. We achieved an 85% agreement rate. We kept 90% of people in their homes. Next slide. And then we continued the program on and expired in August of '22, but we continued on with private funding. But since it was outside of Act 57, the program continued on a voluntary basis. So it was voluntary for either landlords or tenants to come forward for mediation if they were looking to resolve the dispute. Um, out of 669 early landlord tenant cases, 40% resulted in mediation. We had a 73% uh, early landlord tenant case success and agreement. Next slide. What we do know about the EM program is that it's a neutrally based program. It's not meant for just specifically tenants or just specifically landlords. So some of the benefits that we see for tenants is it, or for landlords rather, it reduces the time spent recovering rents and navigating the legal process. On average, that can be anywhere between one and four months. It saves landlords money spent in the eviction process, which can be anywhere between $500 and $10,000. We know that agreements foster relationships and mutual interest and support between parties. So we always want to foster those relationships and keep communities together. And then when there are breakdowns post mediation, so if an agreement can't be kept to for whatever reason, that can be brought to the court to move things along further. Next slide. And of course, EM is a benefit to tenants. Uh, allows for greater housing stability and predictability, whether that's tenants staying within that home or whether tenants have a longer period with which to find a home, particularly in a high housing market like we have here in Hawaii. It can be difficult to find the next place as quickly. Agreements also foster brighter, greater ease in housing relationships between landlord and tenants. Fewer evictions on record is helpful for tenants for their future financial success, including them continuing to receive benefits like Section 8. Overall, it contributes to greater community stability in terms of houseless prevention and fostering responsibility and stability and access to housing and financial resources. Next slide. So the EM program has had quite a bit of success. Um, about 33% of the cases that are landlord tenant cases that come to us are part of the early eviction mediation program. So the remainder come from the court system. We have between a 89 and 93% agreement rate. So these are the figures from fiscal year 2324 and going into fiscal year 2425, but they fluctuate, but they stay around the 90s. So we have a high rate of agreement. And what we know is that when people come to the table, we get results. And those agreements are fostered between landlords and tenants to really serve their needs. We also see that there's been a rise in EM cases in fiscal year 2425 for the second quarter with a 60% increase. Next slide. This is how EM works. It provides landlords and tenants with opportunities to talk with the help of an impartial mediator. If English isn't a participant's primary language, we provide an interpreter. Meetings are held remotely through Zoom. If a participant does not have internet access, MCP fosters access at his office. Before mediation, participants are required to electronically sign a confidentiality agreement. A mediation session will be scheduled for one and a half hours at a day and time agreed upon by both parties. If you reach an agreement, the mediator will put the agreement in writing to be signed electronically. And we do encourage and let people know that these agreements are legally binding so that they know that they need to uphold them moving forward. Next slide. EM scheduling. Cases can usually be scheduled within a 48-hour period because we're working on Zoom and we're working with contracted mediators that are specifically dedicated to this task. So typically, we see cases can be resolved within three to five business days. And then when you look at the time lag, it can be for the courts. This is tremendously expeditious for everyone involved. Next line. We also are introducing different elements to our EM program as we develop it and move it forward. One of the elements that we introduce is the eviction calculator. And this allows landlords to calculate the expense of what it would cost for an eviction based on their specific circumstances. So they enter in information regarding how much their rents are, um, how many properties they have, how many units, et cetera. And it calculates that and it'll give them a figure. Next slide. And it calculates out what, what their figures are based on their input information. So it'll tell them how much they would wind up paying in legal fees to market the apartment for repairs, et cetera. And it gives them kind of a real-time analysis of what the cost would be to encourage, maybe there could be a place where agreement could be found because of the costs. Next slide. We also have a budget calculator and for this, we partnered with HCA. HCA provides case management and financial assistance for the community and they have their own budgetary tools. So we're working with them to use this culturally sensitive, community-appropriate budget calculator. Because what we noticed were that budget calculators that are, you know, nationally used don't necessarily reflect the needs and uses of the community. So in partnering with HCA, we came up with a budget calculator that works for the community here in Hawaii. So you can see this and then next slide is a further descriptor of a budget calculator that's used for tenants. So we use on both sides to give people tools to be able to come to agreement and understanding about what their financial situation is, what the likelihood of getting a tenant evicted is going to cost and really balance all of those interests. Next slide. We're also working on HB 1433 relating to eviction mediation. And this is a bill that's currently being considered. Um, we have a little bit of a summary here about its extent of the period for no termination of a rental agreement. It requires landlords to engage in mediation and delay filing eviction for summary possession. If a tenant schedules or attempts to schedule mediation, it requires landlords to provide specific information and the 10-day calendar notice to tenants. So we have a QR code here. If anyone wants to scan it, take a look at it, feel free. Next slide. We're also working on Kukua hubs and these Kukua hubs are working with community organizations in the neighborhoods. Basically, organizations that people come to for services. We're working with them to establish a place where people can receive mediation support help. So that's basically they can identify if they're a candidate for mediation, help them fill out an online intake form and depending on the space or the community org, provide a private space for them to mediate from if they don't have that at home. Next slide. So for EM requests, I've also put up QR code here. If you know of anyone who's in need of this, or if you want to share this information, this is the perfect way to do it. Anyone looking, uh, to make an early eviction mediation request, use this QR code or this link. You can fill out a form to request mediation. And that is all that I have for you today. Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, does any board members have any questions? Richard?
Yeah, thank you for the important work that you're doing. Um, so it's voluntary. So if either party says they don't want to, like the landlord, um, but it sounds like you get some good participation.
We do get some good participation. We get a fair amount. So based on the work that we've done coming out of Act 57 and all of the work that we continue to do and the outreach that we do to communities, we have been making specific strides in reaching out to landlords and to property managers and to know that we're out there. And we're again, not there to just service one part of the community, but the community as a whole. We understand, um, in my experience here, just doing case management on early eviction, I see both sides of it. So I see landlords who are kapuna and who are struggling to get by. And this is their only means of survival is having these incomes. So really come to agreements, like it's beneficial for the community as a whole. It's not just about preserving a tenant place to live, but it's about preserving everyone's livelihood and making the community work together.
I saw, I saw in one of your early slides, 6,000 people in dire straits.
Yeah.
And then you had about half of that, that you were able to work with in some way.
Yeah, so we had about 85%. So that's coming out of the Act 57 program. So that program was mandatory. So that's coming out of the eviction moratorium. So our rates currently are a lot lower, but at the same time, we're taking up about 33% of the eviction mediations that are coming to us. So that remainder of that 60-odd percent is coming from the courts. So we're really like working to take a chunk out of that. And just in this last year alone, we've grown it from about 12% of that whole pie to about 30. So we're, we're growing steadily in the cases that we're taking on.
And one final question, so say I'm renting. The landlord has to raise it. I'm on a fixed income, whether it's my job or whatever. So there's financial aid, but if there's not, there's really no solution at a certain point where the rent is so high and the person just can't afford it no matter what?
Yeah. So tho- those are really the tough calls and we do, like, we have an experienced team of mediators who's really helpful in navigating these positions and seeing where those soft spots are and where we can give in and maybe where we can give more time, where we can waive late fees, just kind of trying to work with all of the parties. We also, as part of our intake process, we guide people through the A U W 211 system. We let them know that they can go there for any benefits or services and they should go there first to get qualified to see what opportunities are out there for them to get some sort of financial assistance if they're going through hardship. And we also highlight like Catholic charities, CNHA and other community orgs who oftentimes can offer assistance as well. And then we empower our mediators to have a list of resources along with them. And those resources range from financial assistance for rental, utility, rapid rehousing. So we look at the whole spectrum.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Claire?
Hi, thank you again for presenting today. This is so vitally important. Um, I'm taking it to mean this is strictly a can't make the rent situation, not a nuisance tenant type situation.
So we are primarily dedicated to rentals that are in arrears. That being said, we do handle some cases that are nuisance-based, but primarily we're meant to deal with rental arrears. We also, as part of the Mediation Center of the Pacific, do have a program for regular mediations. So this is one particular program that's early eviction that's exclusively over Zoom. But as part of our regular mediation process, you can call and request a mediation at any time. Um, we have mediations that come through the courts. So there's still an ability to service them. It's just that time lag is a little bit longer in our regular program because that's a volunteer-based program.
So I, I take it to mean you are offering in case management is, sounds pretty encompassing where you're offering financial literacy through budgeting, uh, knowledge when they fill out these forms of what costs how much and where they need to appropriate their money and what the community resources are as in A U W. So you do full case management to help people be aware of what, uh, help is available. And have you ever had a landlord maybe decrease the rent or drop a fee or something to try and help that?
So I, I can't speak to that specifically. We've had a number of landlords who have been very flexible with move-out dates, who've given people an adequate amount of time to find another place and things of that nature. So I can't speak to tho- those financial caps. And I just want to clarify that we don't do case management. We really work with other community orgs that do case management. What we do offer is these tools that our mediators can use through the process as they guide tenants and landlords through it. So it's not specifically case management. We try and empower people to find their own solutions and their own tools. We let them know that they're available for them and we share that with them. But we're not doing case management specifically because there are other orgs that do that and they do that beautifully well. And we work with them all the time and we refer out to them all the time. And HCA is, is one of them for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Harris?
I, I wanted to just share, you know, it's what you, was very timely of what, what you presented on. Because personally for myself, I, I had to assist three, three different individuals who, uh, the, the situation was that say they, they worked for a company that for many, many years and all of a sudden the company closed down. And when the company closed down, then these people who've been with the company for so long, their skill sets, they have to retrain and so forth. And so it was, it, it was, it was devastating for them to a point where they were almost evicted from. And so I think, uh, I'm not sure what, what is, what is your, uh, connection with like say employers who are willing to get involved to assist in terms of the transitional workforce, uh, to allow them to get back their income so that they can pay the rent?
So are you referring to their employer has like transitioned to new work that they're no longer qualified to do? Or them transitioning to a whole new field?
Whole new, whole, another company.
Yeah.
So employers who say may be looking for workforce, but not aware of this situation, but bringing it to their attention so that they could be part of the solution in terms of assisting these individuals who kind of lost their, lost their job, but able to be picked up by somebody else who actually could use them, but not aware that that was the situation.
Yeah, I, I think you bring up a very vital issue that affects the community for sure. I don't know how specifically in the early eviction mediation program, we could cross those bridges to really offer solution support. I know that currently we're in talks with Aloha United Way to work on creating some, um, resource that's really dedicated towards people who are either in eviction or early eviction and giving them like holistic support resources that really touch on all of those issues, like you said, workforce training and, uh, employment, um, solutions as well as housing and food benefits and all of the things. Because as you go through the process where you start to become behind on rent, you're in arrears, you may be received a notice, those are very stressful times for people. So they're not always thinking as clearly as they could. It's hard to come up with a plan when you're really trying to really survive and you don't know what's going to happen to your housing next. So what we try and do is we really try and like at intake, we'll give people resources. We equip the mediators with resources. And as I said, we're working with A U W to try and create a holistic resource around those eviction needs to look at all of the things that people should have in their toolkits.
Thank you. And, and especially in this community where there's a lot of rentals, a lot of apartments. I think it's very important that either proactively, when you talk about early intervention, I think we, we should, it'd be very important that we should get the word out so that we can, because the probability within this community is probably larger than others.
Yeah, I agree with you wholeheartedly for sure.
Okay, uh, seeing no more questions from, oh, yeah, from board members. Uh, we'll go ahead and take questions from attendees. So Kelly? Kelly online?
Hi, can you hear me?
You're cutting in and out.
Okay, well, I mean, it's, it's kind of neither here nor there in regards to tenants' rights, but I'm wondering, um, how you're considering, I mean, if there's any consideration regarding, uh, corporate landlords, um, versus local landlords, you know, especially like, um, off, offland, uh, conglomerates? Um, when it, when it comes to how you, how you could consider, um, the, these, uh, landowners?
So I'm not sure how exactly to address that. We know that we do focus on landlords who exist in a variety of different spheres. Some of them are local mom and pop, some of them are large-scale landlords, some of them are off-island. Um, I know that Maui is dealing with its own issues now that the eviction moratorium is lifted and there are a number of cases there where you have off-island landlords. And I know Oahu definitely experiences a significant amount of those as well. Uh, our role in this is not really to police those landlords and how they exist and where they exist. For us, it's about trying to really mediate solutions that work for the community here. So it doesn't matter whether those landlords are off-island or if they're in the community or if they're large-scale or small. We're looking to really just promote housing stability and how we can bridge those gaps and have the community be empowered and have a agreement that works for all of the parties.
Great, thanks.
Okay, seeing no other questions. Thank you very much. Okay, and then we'll move on. So the presentation by Crosshair Ministry, Crosshair, uh, by Leon Nowatalla, he let me know that he's unable to make it tonight, so we're gonna skip over that. And we're going to resolution for support of establishing an empty homes tax. But give me a moment to double check to see if we have quorum yet. I think we have. Yeah. So, yeah, so we have eight of nine to have quorum. So at this point, we can only, uh, discuss, but we can't actually adopt the resolution. Unless we get one more person to show up. Okay. Unless we get one more person to show up. Okay, uh, Ross Izukane, if you'd like to go ahead and present. Uh, Ross online?
Chair, sorry about that.
No problem.
Chair, um, I'll leave it to your discretion. Actually, if you don't actually have quorum, I'm happy to wait. I'm happy to give a quick, brief presentation. I think I'll be a maybe two-minute spiel and answer any questions or uh, it's totally up to you. It looks like you have a full agenda.
Uh, well, most of our agenda is resolutions that we can't adopt because we don't have quorum. But, yes. Okay, that, that's an excellent suggestion. Okay, so I'm being recommended that we uh, skip past the resolutions and go on to uh, elected reports and then circle back uh, if we get quorum. Uh, so I'm going to take up that suggestion. Uh, if you don't mind sticking around a little bit longer, Ross.
Chair, point of order?
Yes, oh, Ian?
Uh, may I ask, I believe there is a presenter there for the next resolution. Uh, is that correct?
Oh, yes, there is. Okay.
I understand that she is a student. Uh, would you mind just asking if she's still available to present later if you're gonna move on?
Uh, yes, that is an excellent suggestion. So, let's see here. Uh, I forgot who there's in the audience. Oh, are you not, uh, let's hear, who is here to present on the, uh, I believe was, yeah, Jessica Lee. Would you be willing, are you able to stick around uh, a little bit longer or would you have to present now?
Um, I can present, uh, can I present now?
Yes, okay. All right, then we'll go ahead and um, move up to the resolution requesting the Department of Education to expand the Korean language program. Okay, and go ahead.
Aloha, Chair Char. My name is Jessica Lee and I am currently a sophomore. South Korea is a country with a rich historical background, a thriving economy and a culture that has gained global recognition. In communities like ours, there's a growing need to learn the Korean language to better understand and reach the full economic benefits. Aside from military investment, South Korea is one of our main trading partners for our country and our state also receives millions of dollars from tourists and investors as well. In fact, Honolulu and Incheon are sister cities. In addition, the popularity of K-pop, K-dramas and K-beauty has been trending globally. We need the neighborhood support to ensure that the D O E will consider expanding Korean language programs within the Kaemukki, Maekinli Roosevelt complex that services the Makiki Tantilis area. Just mentioning Korean as an approved language on the world language list is not enough. The programs need to be available in schools and funded. On February fifth, a resolution was passed at the Manoa Neighborhood Board and I, I am hoping you will pass one tonight as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, do we have any questions from the board? Okay, do we have any questions from any folks and any other attendees?
Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, like uh, Jessica, so you're asking for uh, some kind of curriculum involving teaching Korean? Yeah, can you give us more information about, yeah, what, what would you like to see?
Um, I would just, I would like to see schools being um, off, not just only like offering, uh, putting Korean on their world language list, but actively teaching Korean and for students to be able to learn the language and being exposed to the ec- the economic benefits that Korean has to offer.
Okay, thank you.
Claire?
Hi, Jessica. Thank you for presenting tonight. Do you know, is there anywhere else, for example, we're in a Korean cultural center here. Does anyone offer Korean language studies for the community right now?
I believe Kalani High School, Salt Lake Elementary and um, Mana, Ma- um, Muana Lua, maybe? I think they offer Korean as in their schools, but not in the downtown area where most of the Koreans reside.
Oh, well, that would be helpful to have it where the people actually are. Okay, thank you, Jessica.
Okay, uh, seeing no other discussion and seeing as we don't have quorum, uh, thank you very much for presenting. I imagine if we get another person, we'll probably vote it through. Um, but otherwise, it looks like I'll have to just put this on the agenda again next month. Uh, and hopefully we'll have quorum then. Thank you so much. Okay, um, let's see. Yeah, and uh, and so now we'll go ahead and skip to the officials and if we happen to have quorum, uh, we'll circle back and if not, we'll go back and do a little bit of discussion on the resolutions anyway, since we have uh, some presenters from, for those resolutions. Okay, uh, we'll go ahead and get started with Mayor Rick Blanchardis. Oh, no, ri- right. Um, yes, so uh, you have a new rep for the mayor's office. Uh, she could not make it. So I have to read the report myself. Okay, uh, this month's highlights from the mayor's letter, hundreds attending, hundreds attended a memorial service in Kakaoako to honor Jeff Fiala, a Honolulu firefighter killed in the line of duty. Mayor Blanchardy and members of the mayor's cabinet are sworn into office, beginning a new four-year term. A new ninety-unit bill, seven affordable housing development breaks ground in Makiki. Repairs begin on the seawall and walkway at Queen Surf in Waikiki near the Barefoot Beach Cafe. The city unveils a new Opala truck for lured Oahu parks and beach parks. Uh, the February twenty twenty-five edition of the mayor's newsletter can be found online at W W W dot Oahu dot gov slash mayor slash newsletter. Department of Land Management's updates regarding fourteen twenty-one Pensacola Street, the city issued a request for qualifications seeking affordable housing development partner, partners for a portfolio of underutilized city parcels, one of them being fourteen twenty-one Pensacola Street. At this time, no commitments have been made seeking redevelopment of the properties. However, as the city moves through the development process and selects a proposal, the city will be sure to keep the community and the neighborhood board updated. Please see the R F Q for more information. There is a long URL. Registration for the twenty twenty-five neighborhood board election opens now. Uh, well, it actually ends, or the uh, ends tomorrow at four thirty P M. So be sure to get your application in before four thirty tomorrow. Uh, who can be a candidate? Any residents, including military personnel, military family members and legal resident aliens, must be at least eighteen years of age by tomorrow. Primary residents must reside within the neighborhood board boundary. Who can vote? Anyone can vote, including military personnel, military family members and legal resident aliens, must be eighteen years of age by tomorrow. Voted in the last general election or register with the N C O to vote specifically for the neighborhood board elections. Department issues follow-up. Criminal activity concerns. Residents raise concerns about criminal and drug activity in the community. Can H P D investigate illegal activity in the area nearby fourteen twenty-seven Ernest Street and ten ninety-nine Green Street? What is the history of criminal activity in this area and how has H P D responded? H P D's response is the complaints detail of the Narcotics Vice Division has several operations within the Makiki Tantilis area that are still under investigation with local, state and federal law enforcement partners. As the investigation is ongoing, uh, the N V D continues to work with the residents and property managers in the area. On January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, a representative from District One, Central Honolulu, met with Mr. Harris Nakamoto and Mr. Chuck Lee of the Makiki Neighborhood Board. Councilmember Scott Nishimoto, State Rep. Dela Bellotti and the Building Manager for fourteen twenty-seven Ernest Street. The group reiterated their concerns about the area. Councilmember Nishimoto will address the signage issues and coordinate with the Department of Customer Services Motor Vehicle Control Section to remove abandoned vehicles. The District One officers have been apprised of this situation and, oh, sorry, of this issue and will be monitoring the area for illegal activities. Uh, as for affordable housing projects in the Makiki Lower Punchbowl Tantilis neighborhood, can D P P provide the Makiki Neighborhood Board contracts or details about ongoing and planned affordable housing projects, Bill Five or Bill Seven? For board members and residents to review, for example, there are several affordable housing projects by Lamb Capital LLC, including fourteen twenty-seven Ernest Street, twelve twenty-six Kena- Kenau Street, fifteen sixty-eight slash fifteen seventy-six Pensacola Street and seventeen sixteen seventeen Ala Pay Street. Uh, the D P P response is the following is a list of affordable housing projects we are aware of in the area. The board could ask the applicants to present the projects. Bill seven projects do not require a public hearing. Two oh one H projects are heard at the City Council Zoning Committee and full council meetings. Uh, per a list of revised ordinances of the Honolulu Chapter Thirty-two, AKA Bill Seven projects and Hawaii Revised Statutes, Chapter Two oh one H projects. Okay, that is the mayor's support. Um, all right. And, okay, and uh, Curtis can take any questions uh, that would, yeah, from board members that are directed from the mayor. Do any board members have any questions for Curtis to pass along? Okay, from the public, if you could come up and go ahead and uh, state your name.
Hey, everybody. Uh, Rich Kaz. So with this Bill Seven, um, and as they're mentioning, how many that we have going on in Makiki in this area? There seems to be like no lessons learned from so many of the disconnects that we've been having with the building itself that's already built. Uh, we brought this up several times. There's a lot of uh, things going on with the police and everybody else that's uh, involved with this uh, fourteen twenty-seven Green Street one. And seeing that uh, it kind of changed focus instead of having uh, affordable like workforce people, it's actually now looking at section eight. So there's a lot of section eight people getting in, in, into this building, which our first, you know, thought was that they had mentioned it was going to be uh, affordable workforce for people that are actually working. And it seems like that's not the case. But doing that, why are we not, you know, pausing and then looking at uh, some of the lessons learned from this building or any other buildings that's being put up? Especially not letting us know or the, the neighborhood board, these buildings going up and, you know, like saying, hey, this is going up. You know, can we talk about it and, and be part of the, the process? Because this is not working, what they did and what they have right now. I mean, we're all doing a lot of great things. You know, Harris and Chuck and everybody else that's been part of kind of fix a lot of these problems we're having, which is great. But why are we not looking at the problems so that we can address them for the next buildings coming up? I mean, you know, the one right on um, Wilder, uh, the one on Prospect. I mean, these buildings are coming up super fast. And nobody's stopping to talk about what's going on with the existing buildings that we have problems with. And my biggest thing was asking to see if they're gonna be putting section eight people in. Look at resident managers, putting people in there so that there's somebody there for twenty-four seven. And Mr. Paul Lamb has been requested to be at a lot of our events or, you know, functions or being here, has never showed that he wants to be part of our help or solution to help him build these, you know, section eight Bill, uh, well, Bill Seven uh, projects. But anyways, just something that we should look at as lessons learned and then take a pause. That's my take on it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, oh, uh, I guess we'll start with um, wow, Chuck.
Um, I, I just wanna um, agree with uh, what Rich just said. I think uh, the lessons learned is a, is excellent point. But I think what also needs to happen and, oh, well, before I get into this, I just want everybody to know that I am all for affordable housing. But I think what we need to do is we need to balance whatever we're doing in the community with affordable housing with the community concerns. And right now, it's like, it seems like we're just ramming the affordable housing projects through and just turning a blind eye to all the problems. I know that may sound extreme, but if you talk to Rich and, and, and after listening to him, it seems like it's an ongoing problem, um, living up there in that area and something happens every day. So, and his point about um, making um, having a available resident manager is key because most of these projects do not have a resident manager. So they're, uh, it's like a free fall in the, in the, the, the project where, you know, if extreme cases happen and the police gotta be called when hopefully if you have a resident manager, it could be somewhat mitigated. And the other thing is get, get stricter house rules with enforcement on it. And the enforcement part would be with the resident manager. Anyway, that's my spiel. Thank you.
Okay, I saw Richard next and then I'll recognize Claire after.
So Curtis, you're the point person for the mayor right now? So can you ask the mayor, can we get a information on how many of these projects are having these significant issues? Because I know there've been other projects in our neighborhood that we haven't heard about these issues. So is it just Mr. Lamb or, yeah, so if we get a little more information on that, uh, there's other projects all on the Oahu. Is there a common point where these issues are happening, like the developer? And uh, is, or is this, how unique is this situation? Because it's a bad situation right there.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Claire?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, in support of what everyone is saying, it is a bad situation. It's D P P rubber stamping any Bill Seven. Um, D P P City Council, everyone telling me we have to follow the mayor's agenda. And I said, we need to build responsibly. We, we don't need to adulterate existing communities. These new towers and stuff coming up should be part of the neighborhood, not be some. They're advertised as affordable housing. Well, that's turning out to be a big umbrella where it's, it's not workforce housing, it's section eight and low income and no income housing. And you're getting into all these problems. Um, I don't even think it's about a resident manager, though I can see the merit to that absolutely. It's be honest about what you're building, who you're building it for. They're having trouble renting out these three hundred square feet apartments. You know how small three hundred square feet is and Paul Lamb will say your fa- your family can live here? Well, if you look at the place on Kenaou Street across from Safeway, which at night is a dangerous area, the security guard just was stabbed there. I don't shop at night there anymore. There were two police cars there when I came to this meeting tonight. So people are not renting, people with families are not renting three hundred square foot apartments and nineteen hundred dollars a month is not an affordable rent for three hundred square feet. So there's a, there's a lot of smoke and mirrors and hoodwinking going on here and frankly, I'm tired of it. And Paul Lamb will, has emailed me, we want to be good neighbors, we're gonna be good neighbors, but he won't show his face to talk to us. I, I've really at my wits end at the rubber stamping and Bill Seven doesn't require him to meet with us. Don't call yourself a good neighbor if you're not gonna be a good neighbor. Because it doesn't, shouldn't, you shouldn't be required. You should, of your own volition, come and meet with the neighborhood you're going to affect and not throw up a horrible building wall-to-wall, no room for kids to play, no room for dog relief area, no nearby bus, no jobs, no shopping. What is the point of putting this tower here? They're just, it's, it's about money in the end and I'm frankly getting tired of it. Thank you, Chair.
No problem. Okay, uh, Harris and uh, we'll take Harris and then we have spent a lot of time on this. We'll move ahead after Harris. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. You know, this topic is, is uh, is very, very important. And, and the reason why is, you know, as, as part of the Nice Neighborhoods Committee, we actually physically
We actually physically uh responded to Rich's previous concerns. And in there's one thing to have a discussion here in this room and so forth, but there's a whole different. Uh, dynamics when you actually physically go to the community and the residents and have a. Almost like a large town hall meeting right at the corner of Green and Ernest Street. And our representatives are there, Scott Nishimoto was there, Dela actually Claire was there also. And and the key was HPD was there and HPD. Uh, listened very well, but then the community definitely shared. The the negative impact of what happened, how the community changed with the when the building came up. And it was really um, it was sad. You know, I was, I was really concerned about there. These are longtime residents who lived in the area and noticed that things has changed and so. Uh, and then HPD came out and actually reported data that showed what had transpired since the building came up. So there is data to show what's what the impact has been. Um, but again, I I I I really think that there needs to be some type of. Uh, pause and evaluation of what these so-called affordable housing is is excellent. But what what impact is it bringing in into the community? Uh, is 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 really concerning. And so I just want to share that we actually physically went there, spent spent a Saturday to talk to the residents. So it's not just one person vocalizing, it's many. Thank you.
Okay, I said we'd move on after Harris, but we do have one new person who would like to speak from the audience. So if you could go ahead and state your name, please.
Hello, I'm Audrey Sung and I'm also one of the Green Street um neighbors. And I I thank you all. I think you folks have been listening.
If you could speak closer to the mic, please.
Oh, sure. Um, are aware of what's been going on in our neighborhood. And the police have definitely been responding. I mean, it's almost four or five times um a week that I'm coming home. And there's a cop car out there. Um, we're also calling in because we've been instructed to by the police. You know, we see people loitering, you know, hanging out at the corners, um, being looked out, you know, for drug um activity. And just the. Um, increase in violence and fights that are broken out. Um, it's no longer really safe or quiet neighborhood. I mean, we all walk our dogs in their neighborhood. Out of um working class families like Rich, I've been there for twenty years. So, um. Yeah, so I'm concerned, like you mentioned, that the mayor is it's all um not public. And there's no accountability and this is all taxpayer funds, especially with section eight, you know. Yeah, it's our money. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And we'll go ahead and move on to uh councilmember Scott Nishimoto's report. I think I saw Taylor Dattay.
Hello, Chair. Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we could hear you.
Okay, sorry, Chair. Um, no, I just wanted to share. But um we are jointly going to be hosting a tax clinic uh with Representative Bellotti. That's over sixteen years now. That's going to be on Saturday, March eighth at the Hawaii State Public Library. So this is a free tax preparation clinic. Um, so appointments are going to be required and so I'll drop that information in the chat. Um, otherwise, you know, I'm just, we're just encouraging people to sign up for our e-blast, which we send out pretty weekly, I would say. And we want to keep up to date with the community. Um, otherwise, yeah, we followed up on some of the requests from the last meeting and. For the most part, we tried to follow up individually with the constituents. Um, but if there's any more requests, uh, please uh feel free to bring them up now so we can work on them as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you, Taylor, and uh starting with members of the board. Seeing none, do we have any attendee, any uh community members who? Oh, okay, Ian.
Thank you very much, Chair. Uh, my question for Taylor relates to uh GIA's and other sorts of grants from the city and county. Uh, as we shared with us at the last meeting, I believe, uh, the council member is vice chair of uh the budget committee. And uh, you know, we've been hearing about in our meeting space at the Korean Cultural Community Center, some needs for some upgrades that would help the meeting and the community. So I was wondering if we could hear a little bit more about the budget cycle for grants from the city. Thank you very much.
Oh, okay. Yeah, no, thank you, Ian. I'm gonna have to double check on that one. I'm not exactly sure on the schedule for that, but yeah, we're kind of gearing up uh for our budget briefings. Uh, first, my boss, he's, we start in a couple of weeks, so that's going to be coming up. But yeah, I'll get back to you on in regards to the GIA specifically through the city.
Thank you very much, Taylor.
Okay, and then I think I saw Kelly.
Hi, I just had to, so I I listened to a. Um, intense uh HPR story the other day about. Section eight and how, you know, I mean, just to go back to the, you know, I don't know what the um. What the housing in question is because I'm just kind of joining, but. Um, I think, you know, it's like that's sort of like a big thing that goes along with with. Section eight and affordable housing are are these like. You know, all the massive documentation that that goes along with it. And then um and then second, you know, and I don't want to do, you know, be. Too woke, but I do feel like, you know, it's like the the terminology of illegal aliens versus. You know, undocumented non-citizens is something that we should really think about as far as just the way that we talk about um. Uh, people who are here, you know, I mean, maybe illegally, maybe not, you know. Only Trump will tell, but I think that we should be really thoughtful and careful about how we refer to people who are here. Um, fleeing whatever disparities that they've got going on, so. Just um wanted to share that. Thank you so much. It's good to be here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kelly. And seeing no other comments or questions, thank you very much, Taylor. Uh, moving on to councilmember Tyler De Santos Tam, I think I saw um Robin.
Oh, okay, there I am. Uh, hi, guys. Uh, good evening. I've shared our February newsletter in the chat. I've also shared um from our previous meeting, there were some questions on how the uh sewer fees increase. Um, how the fees uh where they would be collected and if they could be expended on anything else. Other than the maintenance and operation and construction uh of work within EMV. Um, I shared the director's response below. It's basically no. Um, the the sole purpose of the fees will be kind of recycled back into uh the department. Um, to help pay for the super, the sewer operation and maintenance and construction work. Um, so that response is there. Um, and yeah, I'm here for any questions. I know tonight's a busy night, so.
Okay, do we have any questions from board members? Ian?
Thank you very much. Uh, Robin, am I correct uh that uh the council member is now chair of the budget committee? Is that correct?
You are very correct.
All right, that that's fantastic. It's nice to have a a council member who's uh chairing budget committee. Um, uh, unfortunately, it comes at a very unstable time, of course. Uh, is there anything in particular that he's watching for in Washington DC that might have budget implications for the city?
He's, he's reaching out to our um fellow congressman in um in DC. Yeah, he's in close communications. He's keeping track that um federal funding uh will trickle down and we're not sure. Um, how much trickle down, um especially over the next four years and it ultimately will affect city programs. Um, as 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 you just mentioned, grants and aid is um also uh on top of mind. Um, but we're, we're trying to gain glean more information, especially from the administration on what they're doing. Um, and how they're going to handle it. We we don't know, uh, basically. We're just trying to communicate with everyone to kind of trying to get a uh paint a better picture of what's going on. Um, but yes, councilmember De Santos Tam is uh keenly aware um and hyper vigilant right now. And um he's taking everything right now very, very seriously, so um I hope the community, I want to convey that uh very clearly to the community, yeah.
Chair, do you have time for me to ask one more question?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, so Robin, um, I uh, you know, I'd heard the governor rolling out his plan for trying to expedite hiring for uh federal workers may have lost their job during uh. Recent uh budgetary changes. Uh, is the city going to be trying to do something similar?
That's a great question. Um, and I can get back to you on that, definitely, yeah.
You know, one of the things I think we've lamented uh for this board, uh, there were at least one resolution is the extreme shortage in hiring. And uh, you know, there's a lot of really talented folks who unfortunately, you know, might have lost their jobs and, you know. That's a separate issue. We don't have anyone federal on or it might be on my soapbox for that issue, so I'm putting that aside for a moment. Um, but you know, does strike me that some of our most vital services, you know, have been struggling to hire to fill those. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, uh Harris.
Hi, Robin. Harris Nakamoto.
Here's.
Hi, I wanted to ask, you know, because uh we don't have access to looking in the chat, but could you provide a high summary? Level in terms of the where where the city council is at uh that's tied to the sewer rate hikes?
Okay, let me try to summarize here, yes. Um. So the short answer, um, if if the fees can be spent elsewhere within the city and uh the answer is no. The sewer fees can only be used for sewer projects and operations, um, not any other city functions. Um, what else can I say directly quote here?
Has the, has there been a final decision on the rate hike itself or when is, is there a presentation or uh discussion that will come up to the council?
Yeah, so bill sixty is the sewer, the sewer fees legislation. Um, it will be scheduled in the near future. It is within our committee right now. Um, and we will have an info briefing, um, maybe not next month, but maybe the ne- the next month after that. Um, April potentially, but um it hasn't been scheduled yet, but yes, I will inform the board and I can email you. Um, when there's more information on that, um, yeah.
Yeah, if possible, if if you could keep an eye on that for and and somehow if if it's an opportune time for. An update for the for our board. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Okay, uh, oh, Richard.
Uh, Taylor and and Harris, who's the city council person? Whose district is that in, that Ernest Street?
That's uh Scott.
Scott, okay.
Uh, yes, so I believe uh when my boss attended the Ernest Street briefing. Um, we did submit some risers on the trees, actually. So I'm still waiting to hear back on the like tree trimming. Uh, were you there for that, Mr. Koano?
Uh, no, I'm I'm referring to the problem with these, you know, uh. The police being there five times a week of it, if you were hearing the conversation earlier.
Uh huh.
As a councilman, can can he get more involved in trying to resolve that situation and see what he can do from his office?
And uh, do you mean specifically in regards to the bill seven projects by Paul Lamb?
That that, yeah, that specific project.
Yeah, I mean, so.
From the community and.
Yeah, I mean, as you probably know, if you were at the briefing, it does seem like the issue with that project specifically is the initial. Um, managing office for that project, they actually, they didn't really screen the applicants for the project that well. And it seemed to have brought in a lot of problem constituents into our neighborhood, unfortunately. And so, you know, they change management and it seems to be taking steps towards, you know, they're trying to. Filter out the constituents that are bringing problems and. To bring in, you know, people closer to the higher AMI. Um, you know, for lack of a better word, but yeah, it's. I think my boss really wants to push that the management company is exceptional and, you know, it is. It's, you know, he's working with um Paul to stay on top of that. There's also another project coming up in our community that we just went to the community briefing for. Um, I believe it's the Hong Wanji.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, uh Harris.
Since uh but but another uh project was that sixteen seventeen Ala Pay and that's, Robin, that's it within you guys' area. And so the that project also is tied to Paul Lamb.
Correct.
So I, so I think there needs to be some type of coordination of the impact that's going on. And then also the. The review process of what had transpired at fourteen at fourteen twenty seven Ernest Street. So that somehow we were not like. Uh, siloing a lot of these projects, they they need to be looked at in terms of what's what the impact is in the neighborhood and. And then I know Scott is working on 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 a few and and it'll be helpful for. For uh councilmember De Santos Tam to also look at that. Thank you.
Okay, uh, are there any questions? Oh, okay, Rich.
So I'll make this super quick. Um, I know there's a discussion saying that the second property manager Savio. Wasn't part of the initial uh bringing in the section eight people, which is not the case. Uh. The first property manager company uh only got a few people in, they weren't able to get. Uh, enough people into the building. So Savio took over the property manager. There was only about three or four people in there. The building is pretty full right now and Savio was the one that brought in all the section eight people or. Not the original thought of bringing people in at the uh workforce. And I'm directly in front of this building and I've seen all these things going on, so I know there is a disconnect there. And I think if Savio wants to look into the people that actually was there prior. And how many people actually that they brought in and make it, you know, aware of like, okay, I brought in, you know, sixty percent. Versus, you know, him saying that they were there before Savio brought it in and I did talk to him. But uh, yeah, that's that's a false statement that uh Savio inherited these uh people that are there now, which is not the case. And I can say that's a fact.
Okay, now, thank you for bringing that up with us. Sorry, we were kind of told a different story, honestly, so it's good to know. Um, you know, what you've sent you folks are actually living in the community and you're facing it every day. We're trying to, you know, my boss really wants to help the people that are living in the community. And have to really deal with the repercussions of this, so yeah, please feel free to keep um letting us know. And updating us on this project specifically.
Okay, any other community concerns? Nope. Okay, uh, well, thank you very much, uh, Robin, and we'll go ahead and move on to the state of Hawaii elected official reports. Uh, starting with Russell Pang, our governor's representative, but unfortunately, he could not make it. Uh. So he. His brief report to me is that uh. he, regarding Harris's discussion on getting assistance for two homeless women, uh, he was trying to follow up with the governor's homeless outreach team, but hasn't heard back. Uh, his understanding is that somebody from John Mizuno's team reached out to Harris.
Can I provide an update?
Go for it.
This has been really a, a great learning experience for me in terms of the process. So since November twenty-seven until today, uh, I'm still not successful in terms of placing, uh, these two homeless women into the Kahalei. However, I, I really appreciate Representative Kim Kokoiwamoto in terms of connecting me with the Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center. And it was, it was, it was really great in terms of their outreach that facilitated, actually getting them, getting the two women into the system, into the system to get all their data. Uh, and then I also learned that Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center currently manages the Middle Street Kahalei. So through that connection of the outreach and the Kahalei, I think, uh, we're able to connect with the, um, the manager who oversees that Middle Street Kahalei, her name is Kawai. And was able to place their applications at that, uh, Kahalei. And the reason why I got involved with this project was because these two homeless women, actually during a day, they actually work. So they were work, they work. So meaning that they just need a shelter and then the ability to get back on their feet and then also then move into some type of rental arrangement. So that kind of got me involved because it, they kind of put some skin in the game in terms of their, their future. So I, so I think by, within the next week or so, they'll be in the Kahalei. And it was, and I learned that at the Kahalei, even if you're not in the Kahalei, you can still go to the Kahalei to wash your clothes, to take a shower, and, and so forth, and, and meals. So if they're extra. So, um, and I, 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 I think that there's a, a great opportunity for improvements that can be made, especially for the homeless that are actually working. If they're working during the day, then there needs to be some types of expediting that occurs. And also I learned that our system is a Monday to Friday operation. Homelessness is seven days twenty-four seven. And so in terms of for the state, I think really, uh, the homelessness projects and programs need to be, uh, dealt with on twenty-four seven basis. And, and also there needs, definitely needs to be some attention and priority to those who are, who want gainful employment. Because they're, they're at, at that breaking point and if we don't help them, then they'll break. So I think it's, it's urgent to, to do that. So again, I'm, uh, you know, I learn, I'm still learning, but I, I learned quite a bit over the last couple of months. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Harris. Um, it sounds like there's a bit of follow-up. So be sure to email Russell Pang and he said he'll, he'll take anything, uh, any additional follow-up. Just let him know. Uh, furthermore, uh, he said this morning, our office received a complaint about, uh, pothole fronting fourteen forty-eight KMoku Street. Uh, the complaint has been logged and highways maintenance will schedule a repair. And then the newsletter is in the Google Drive, I hope. Yeah, and it's also on the governor's website. Okay. Uh, moving on to Senator Kao Fukunaga.
Good evening, board members. We are kind of at the first big deadline point. And next week is our second big deadline point, when we hit first decking deadline. And each chamber has to come up with the bills that are being recommended for adoption on third reading. So tonight I have kind of a, a short list of some of the condo insurance measures that are pending. We are sort of in the same place that we were last year. And so that's a little bit discouraging. You know, most of the industry-supported bills call for restoration of the Hurricane Relief Fund and Hawaii Public Property Insurance Association in getting their operations underway to take care of not only condo properties, but also single-family lava zone properties and individual townhome associations that are experiencing a lot of condo or a lot of insurance concerns. So we learned that the, um, the process by which the startup has undertaken is going very slowly. So at this point, it looks as though the soonest that they will begin to have, uh, operations on board where they can begin to determine how they're going to help condo property owners is probably September, October, November of this year. So that's a little bit concerning. Uh, we had two measures that, um, I had helped introduce. One Senate Bill eight oh four is kind of designed to encourage insurers to provide discounts if condo properties, um, install or develop, uh, risk reduction types of improvements in their properties. That's kind of something that, you know, we're looking at nationally, but unfortunately in Hawaii, because so many of the condo properties are being served by what they call secondary, um, types of insurers, surplus lines. There are only three insurers in Hawaii with, um, property insurance responsibilities that are serving our condo market. And so we have a very, very limited capacity to require people who are not really being regulated in Hawaii as to how they might, you know, provide some sort of discounts. Second one is our mutual insurance proposal. Uh, this is something that we worked on over the last year. Uh, we hope that we can at least keep the discussion going on mutual insurance approaches, partly because mutual insurance would be a lot more helpful for older condo properties. The, the strategy here is that it's very much like what the state did when we ran into the workers' comp crisis about twenty years ago. And by working with individual companies directly, the state was able to help companies improve their, um, employment, uh, conditions, reduce a lot of the workers' comp claims. And all of those companies have since gone on to become far more insurable as well as providing a lot more safety within their operations. Other than that, we have a couple of other bills, Senate Bill fifteen sixty-three and Senate Bill sixteen oh one, which, um, on one hand, if we can't get the insurers to provide more, we're looking at saying, maybe we need to set up a, uh, what is it, a, um, what is it, Office of Insurance Consumer Affairs within the insurance division, partly because we are unable to regulate most of those that are providing insurance to our condo properties. Last one is, um, an assistance program where we're looking at new forms of assistance for those condos that are experiencing difficulty in getting financing. So we've been at this for several years. It's not terribly encouraging at this point, but I did want to give you a, a heads up on where we stand. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, Chuck.
Yes, Senator, um, first of all, again, I thank you. I cannot thank you enough on behalf of all the residents in Makiki for all your tireless efforts in working on these condo issues. Um, thank you so much. Um, I just wanted to know, I know I've been working partly with you on the, uh, fire safe, life safety issues and fire sprinkler systems and all that. Has there been any updates that you could share with us on that?
Uh, one encouraging note, you know, the fire department does, um, report on the number of, um, condo properties that are still in, uh, the gray area. They've completed their life safety evaluations and they're looking to be able to make, you know, the necessary upgrades so that they can pass the life safety evaluation. Last year, the total number, uh, that had passed their life safety evaluations was twenty properties. This year, it's gone up to thirty properties. But when you consider that we have two hundred eighty plus properties that are still in that gray area, that, that statistic is way too low. And it's, um, too slow for us to really rely upon. So I think as we get more data this year, we're going to look to also start reaching out to the city council and the administration because we either have to change the city ordinance or we have to acknowledge that there are too few companies that can do the work to help, uh, businesses and condo associations make those changes in the timeframe that is available to them, you know, under the ordinance.
Okay, Richard.
Senator, so I'm concerned and pessimistic about what can actually be done to help condos and insurance. Like in our condo, it went up five times from fifty thousand to two hundred fifty thousand. And we only have fifty-five units to spread that across. So as insurance companies or for-profit organizations, we can't make them do things that will make them unprofitable. Uh, help, word, word.
Well, I guess.
Yeah, what's gonna happen?
Well, what I would say is this, you know, Governor Green did say earlier this year that during the first twenty years, you know, in which we had a lot of condo properties in Hawaii that were, um, actually good clients, you know, the last twenty years was actually very profitable for many of the insurance companies. And so after some of the global events that occurred, okay, maybe this is not as profitable a market today. But I think if condo owners speak up and let legislators know that you are really suffering, it's going to make a big difference because right now there are very few people who are submitting written testimonies. And, you know, I'm sure that, um, nobody really wants to, uh, you know, share stories of, of great suffering. But I think the more that people realize that many people who have lived in condos paid their fees, you know, managed their operations in the best way they can, are really being squeezed out of their homes. I think people would take this issue a lot more seriously.
Okay, uh, in the interest of times, thank you very much, Senator. Okay, uh, next up, uh, we have someone from Rep. Della Bellotti's office. Okay. Oh, is Hector's with, uh, Hector's with Andrew Garrett? Um, I think. Oh, he's with Della. Okay, Hector. Okay, well, uh, we'll go ahead and move on to Rep. Kim Kokoiwamoto.
Good evening. Um, this is my office manager or your office manager, Kate Ozawa. Thank you. Um, yeah, she just passed out our newsletter, first newsletter. Thank you for being so patient as we got ourselves situated, took a while to get in office, staff. Um, so thank you for bearing with, with me. Um, so as Senator Fukunaga mentioned, we are at a halfway, approaching a halfway point at the legislature. Um, and I know, um, somebody put here that fireworks, that they want to hear about fireworks, um, bills. There are quite a number of fireworks bills that are moving. Unfortunately, I don't think the, I, there are a lot, um, to do with survey, like sting operations and, um, increasing fines and penalties. Um, I, I submitted a bill which I don't think is moving, uh, but had to do with a, you know, whenever you want to change behavior, education is an important approach. Uh, so I submitted a bill to focus on educating, especially kids, so that they go home and say, why are we buying all these fireworks? We don't need all this. I'm just really educating the kids about the, you know, the harms as well as the costs. You know, the cost to maybe their households, but also the cost to the community and other, other people. Let's see, what else? Um, I know that you're just going to be weighing in on an empty homes tax. Um, I did submit a bill regarding an empty, a vacant home surcharge because the state can't tax real property. But we can try to, um, reclaim the general excise tax that we lose when dwellings are kept vacant. Whereas if they're rented, they, the, the landlord would have to remit general excise tax for the, collected on the rental fees. And also all the families who, um, the families who would be living in the unit, um, they would go out into the community and buy coffee and groceries. And, um, you know, obviously they would be spending money, which then is more GT. So our communities are losing out on that economic vitality and that economic resource. So, um, finding a mechanism to collect that. So in that, again, that one's not really moving either, unfortunately. There's, I'm going to turn it into a, a resolution just to build more discussion and awareness with my colleagues. Let's see, um, some of the, we, since the office opened, we've been tracking constituent concerns, things they've been calling us about, um, condo issues is, is a leading, um, leading topic. Um, and with that, I, um, so I'm on the, I'm on the Consumer Protection and Commerce Committee, which does hear, uh, many of the insurance, um, bills. And so there are things moving, um, from the House, um, to the Senate side and, um, regarding. But again, it's, uh, you know, the Hurricane Relief Fund, um, there's, I submitted, actually one of my bills is moving. It has to do with, um, asking the insurance commissioner to create standards around, um, a, a form of mutual insurance. My bill actually also included self-insurance, um, and also this concept of building life insurance that would, that would have, um, and so the chair encouraged me to actually resubmit this next session to get more, to, uh, focus on this one more, the, the concept of building life insurance. Uh, this would be perfect for developers who could negotiate a contract with an insurance company that would be long-term, like maybe sixty years, um, where they basically rate all of the building components to say, um, and then also set out a schedule of maintenance, uh, regular maintenance, um, a schedule of, um, reserves, a schedule that would include ensuring that directors are properly, um, uh, knowledgeable about their fiduciary duties. All of these things can be built into this contract. And then the, hopefully, the concept would be that the insurer can't run away. Year twenty, they would have to stay put. Um, and, um, and hopefully then your insurance will be, uh, lower and more predictable. There's another one, um, specifically addressing Kupuna, Kupuna who have equity in their, in their home. And but now they're being hit with, but they're on a, you know, on a fixed income. And they're being hit with arrears, they're being hit with, um, assessments, I'm sorry, and also rising insurance costs. And so now suddenly they're like, oh, I can't afford, how, how am I going to afford this? Um, the federal program does have a, um, it's kind of like a reverse mortgage, they call it equity conversion. Um, and so I, my, my bill proposed that the, um, housing, um, HHF. I just keep, I keep forgetting this, Hawaii Housing. Yes, thank you, HFDC. Thank you, Senator, um, that they would be the agency in charge of, um, administrating this program. Again, it is based on a federal HUD program. And that one, um, again, isn't necessarily moving, but I'll be putting it into the form of a resolution to further the discussion. Yeah, any, uh, any, okay, also condo issues, I just wanted to share with you. Ethics reforms is the second, um, oh, OHA, um, so my district is mostly, um, Makai of the Highway. So there's a little sliver of, um, your neighborhood board district that's in my district. Uh, and so the, um, so the Kakako Makai, uh, development, uh, the OHA's proposals. That's been a, an issue that a lot of people have been calling about and weighing in, weighing in on. And I do encourage, um, the public to, we set up a survey. And you can, the survey, if you want to get to it, it's bit, B I T dot L Y slash OHA Kakako Makai. And it just runs through a list of. And it just runs through a list of questions that you can then let me know what your position is on this issue. Yeah, so that's the gist. Any questions?
Okay, I believe we have time for a couple of questions, so we'll start with Claire and then Chuck, and that'll be it.
Thank you, Chair. And I think I just want to plant a seed here for Representative Iwamoto and for Senator Fukunaga to get back to condos. There are three elephants in the room, okay, the condo insurance craziness. What was the one you were just talking about? Oh, the fire safety is another one, but there's a third one. This self-governance of condos has put unqualified people on boards of directors and property managers that are not often giving the best advice. My information's anecdotal from friends all over the island. We're not just getting hit with insurance increases, we're getting hit with, oh, my God, we never budgeted to have money for the plumbing replacement and this repair and that, the spall repair.
Yes.
So we're getting layers of increased costs for ourselves. So I certainly, I've worked with the D C C A on their community education program. We wanted to make it mandatory for board members to have this education. And I really want to put, you know, put some water on that seed again to do something about this because our condo boards are and property managers are sinking us.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think I heard this fact mentioned that we have one of the highest suit, suits, rates of suits regarding this kind of fiduciary duty or the lack of fiduciary duty of board members. So yes, absolutely, it's on our radar and advocates are working on this. Unfortunately, it seemed, we need to do a better job of educating the chairs of key committees to not just listen to the, to the industry experts, but to actually listen to the the consumers, the condo owners. Yeah.
Okay, and then Chuck.
Yeah, Representative Iwamoto, I commend you for putting in this bill about term limits. I, I, I have a tendency to agree with you on that, but I just was wondering, how did you come up with sixteen years?
I thought it was long enough to get more people to sign on. There is, I think there are bills put in for twelve years, fourteen years. Some bills would only apply moving forward, whereas my bill's like sixteen years, starting from whenever it passes. But I don't think any of these bills are gonna, they're not moving, you know. So, I mean, not the term limits, it's unfortunate because I really, it's our, it's a voter refer, it's the only time that the voters get to participate is when they're allowed to answer that question on a ballot, right? It's not, as a, for the legislature, it's not saying you support this subject matter, but you support the voters having a vote on this subject matter, like that should be the the question. Like, do you support the people having a say?
Okay, yep, and thank you so much, Representative Kim Kokoi. Okay, next up, we have Rep. Ikaike Olds. I believe you muted yourself again, Ikaike.
Sorry, Ikaike Olds, Health District Twenty-three, had some tough acts to follow here. So for the appreciation of time, just want to share one particular bill that's moving to the House right now. That's important to me, that's a House Bill nine four three, which is related to a homeless triage center. As many of you may have already heard, my primary agenda was to try to address the public safety issues in our district. So a lot of the bills that I had were related to homelessness and crime. I'm open up for any questions. I apologize, my son's sitting right here, so he doesn't bother us.
Okay, do you have any questions from the board? I believe Harris, maybe you want to get Ikaike's number? Oh, you got it? Oh, you got a little bit, okay. And are there any other questions from the board? Seeing none, do we have any questions from community members? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much, Ikaike.
Thank you.
Okay, and next up, we have Representative Andrew Garrett.
Thank you, Chair, good evening, everyone. Doesn't help people in the room, but I just put my newsletter into the chat box for people who are online so they can see it. As Senator Fukunaga mentioned, you know, schedule-wise, we're about a third to a halfway through the legislative session. You know, we're just going through many deadlines. At this point, about half of the three thousand bills that were introduced have died already. And as you folks know, this is really a process of attrition. The next really key deadline, besides the first decking deadline the senator mentioned, is our budget crossover. You know, we're all concerned about what's happening in Washington, D.C. and what the impact is going to be on federal dollars that flow here. In case anyone isn't aware, roughly four billion dollars comes in from Washington, D.C. every year out of roughly twenty billion dollar budget. And if, you know, we have any impacts there, it's going to cause a lot of effects throughout the community. So the budget document is kind of what we're just focusing on now to make sure that, you know, if we need to backfill federal funding cuts, that we're prepared to do so. But it's just a really difficult time right now. I guess, yeah, just in the interest of time, I'll stop there and see if there are any questions from the members of the community. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, and any questions from board members? Nope, seeing none, any questions from community members? Nope, seeing none, thank you very much, Representative Andrew Garrett.
All right, see you next month.
Take care. Okay, and well, now that all the presentations are done, we'll circle back to our resolutions. And like I said, unfortunately, we're unable to get quorum tonight, so really it'll just be discussion and I will put these on the next agenda and hopefully we'll have quorum then. Okay, so starting with the resolution for support of establishing an empty homes tax in Honolulu. Ross, are you still there?
Yes, Chair, I'm, I'm still here. Thank you, thank you, Board, thank you, community for, for being here. Perhaps I'll just give a more truncated kind of discussion on this. But but really, if any of the board members or the community are really following Bill Forty-six and establishing the empty homes tax at the city council, maybe this is a good time. If you have specific questions on the bill, I can answer them. And then next month, when you have quorum, both the forum, I can give a, maybe a more robust discussion and in hopes of a vote. If Representative Iwamoto is still in the room, many thanks for introducing the empty homes tax surcharge or the empty home surcharge, because that is much appreciated. But but really, a lot of people in Hawaii just believe that, given our housing crisis, the empty homes tax or an empty home surcharge to just try to curb speculative investment demand is really, really one key step to our housing crisis. So again, let me just pause, just because I know it's getting late in your meeting. If anyone has been following the bill and wants to ask questions while I'm here in advance of hopefully a vote next month.
Okay, Richard.
Ross, give me a quick education here. So where are these, these empty homes? What's the main cause of these things? I'm here, I'm thinking speculation, you know, you're a speculator, you, you don't want to rent it out, you want to keep it nice and clean and plan to sell it two years later. Yeah, tell me more about the, you know, how this problem came to be.
You know, one of the numbers, and that's a great question, one of the numbers that we've seen is about thirty-four thousand, thirty-four thousand vacant homes on a lot. It's a lot, and there's could be a lot of reasons for them, a lot of valid reasons sometimes. But but also we can't ignore that a big chunk of them will be investors who are looking to just purchase, speculate on an appreciating asset class and then selling for profit and taking advantage of some of the lowest property taxes in the nation. Many of these individuals probably don't even live in Hawaii and they would rather leave these units vacant rather than rent them out to a long-term renter. So again, I'll just say, a lot of the reasons could be varied. Bill Forty-six in particular has about sixteen different exemptions. So if a home is vacant, they would look to see if there's a valid reason why. For example, one of the exemptions would be an Oahu resident who already has a home exemption, but this is their second home, that would actually be exempt because this bill, I believe, is really tailored to look for those speculative investors that own three, four, five speculative investments.
Thank you, thank you.
Claire?
Thank you, Ross. There are things I don't understand in this, how do you folks plan to monitor, identify and then monitor the vacant home investment owners? And how do you plan to assess them? Is there, is there a workforce setup or a budget? Or is this just the initial feeler of taxing people? They're already paying a higher mortgage rate for investment properties, but that doesn't benefit us. So how, how do you folks plan to implement this?
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I didn't actually introduce myself, so I'm just a member of a grassroots coalition that supports the empty home stack. So I'm a civilian, I'm not part of the city. But to answer the question, the Bill Forty-six would initially rely on effectively self-declarations. So similar to the homeowner's exemption, you know, there's, there's not a whole lot that goes in there besides a property owner kind of declaring that I own this home, I reside in this home. So that would be the initial screen, just, you know, letting property owners declare for themselves about what this property is being used for. Now, beyond that, of course, there has to be some level of enforcement, some level of auditing perhaps. The city, according to the bill right now, would have at least two years because the bill wouldn't go into effect until twenty twenty-seven to figure out some type of implementation, maybe enforcement, maybe even auditing plan. But but, you know, we believe just in our coalition that the first screen of just the self-declaration, but most people we think will be honest, is a good step.
Thank you, Ross, the honor system first, okay. Thank you, thank you, Chair.
And if I may add, Claire, you know, that, that's basically the system that the city right now uses for the homeowner's exemption and for other exemptions for real property tax. You know, the city is short-staffed as well and short-resourced, so there's not a whole lot enforcement for those other exemptions.
True that, true that, thank you.
Okay, Eric?
Yes, a question, has there been other cities have implemented this or other areas have implemented something like this and have seen any success or, you know, things that we can learn from, from other places that, on this? Thanks.
Yeah, Eric, so the main city that Bill Forty-six, Chair Waters actually modeled this bill after, along with a lot of consultants, was Vancouver, Canada. They had problems very, very similar to Honolulu and that speculators from all of the world were looking to buy a piece of that property and hold their capital there. The vacancy tax in Vancouver, Canada, worked exceptionally well. They have many studies and reports that showed that absolutely within the first two years of implementation, vacancy numbers went down. The cities in the United States that have passed some form of vacancy tax has been Washington, D.C., also similar issues. San Francisco has, and other cities in California are either considering or have approved the vacancy tax, but to my knowledge have not actually implemented yet.
Thank you, do we, do we know what, I mean, so it sounds like Vancouver's had great success. What kind of percentage increases, I guess, they would, you know, are we modeling ours directly after theirs? Or are we going to be doing something different?
It's modeled, great question, it's modeled very closely to their concept. Right now, the bill has evolved and changed through amendments. So while Vancouver relied on just another property tax, but like this would be, Vancouver used an incremental tax as their vacancy tax. Chair Waters, and through the normal process, the legislative process, determined that it might be better to have this be a separate residential property class. So, you know, we have our residential A, we have different sorts of that. So that's what he's modeling this off of. But really, I mean, there's a lot of nuance, there's a lot of detail, of course, and, you know, even, even a civilian like me reading the bill sometimes gets a little lost. But the key is just the concept of getting it into city ordinances of saying, if you own excess property, if you're not using it to either house Oahu residents, if you have no good reason why it's vacant, then potentially you're going to have to pay extra tax.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Yeah, great question.
Okay, oh, I see Ian.
Thank you very much, Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to echo and add some numbers to it. UHERO, the Economic Research Organization at the University of Hawaii, did a great breakdown that compared the Vancouver tax to this tax. The Vancouver numbers, according to this study, was a fifty-four percent reduction in the city's vacancy rate. My question for, and sorry if I missed this earlier, for speaker, is does the current bill prescribe any use of the funds? Like, does it go into an affordable housing or workforce housing revolving fund? So we can both tax the vacant and actually get some housing for some of the local families that need it?
Yeah, Ian, there's a lot of great discussion around what should any potential revenues do? Should they be dedicated to homelessness solutions, to affordable housing solutions? Right now, my understanding is because the city council budget is so sensitive, a lot of the council members are leaning toward just having the allocations of the revenue go to the general fund. Now that said, this council has shown that they are very pro-housing, they are very pro-affordable housing. So we truly believe that any revenues that would be generated, that would allow them, that would give them the flexibility to go ahead and push more money into many of the cities ongoing affordable housing projects, especially the ones that Mayor Blangiari has already announced.
Great, thank you very much. And I linked the study in the chat, can't share physically, people are on the computer for anyone who wants to read more. Thanks so much for your advocacy on this and for bringing it before the board.
Thank you, Ian, great find with the numbers.
Okay, are there any further questions from the board? Seeing none, are there any questions from the community? Seeing none, thank you very much, Ross, for the great answers to all the questions and talking about the bill in general.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Board, thank you.
Okay, and then we'll go ahead and move on to the, let's see here, we already covered the resolution requesting the Department of Education. So a resolution addressing traffic and safety hazards caused by Chick-fil-A operations. Again, we don't have quorum, so at best we can just talk about it. Would you like to step up, Laura? We, thanks to aggressive timekeeping, we actually have a bit of time. It's only seven fifty, so we have about ten minutes to discuss this, so. Oh, right. Yeah. Okay, yeah, sorry, so what are you saying is there is, there are issues with posting the resolution online? So it was only posted this morning. Oh, so you were able to see it, but I imagine some of the other folks have not had a chance to see it. So yes, please, go ahead and talk about it.
I guess for decision-making next time, I mean, you all are aware, I've been before this board before about the traffic safety issues ongoing at the Makiki Chick-fil-A. Just wanted to bring up a few points on why the updated resolution is necessary. Chick-fil-A still is in violation of their traffic management plan in the morning. So this is the plan that was submitted with their permit to D P P that was approved. They should have two lanes open at all times. And a lot of times in the morning, when you drive past, it says right lane only, I mean, left lane only. So it directs people into one lane, and on weekends, that causes the traffic to back up onto the roadway. The second is that even though the parking solution was shot down last time, there's still, we need to find something to do about it because when cars are parked on the right-hand side and cars straddle two lanes as the driveway line queues up, it's becomes dangerous for drivers and residents in that area to make a turn in. And a lot of times in the evening when I'm observing it, folks are just like, well, we're just going to drive in whatever lane over the lines. There's really kind of no lanes happening when those, those two lanes are taken up by the drive-through line. And last is, you know, DTS has stated in a letter to me that they don't view that there is a problem going on. And they made this decision based on verbal feedback from staff members, not through any formal process or documented process of going and observing what time they were there, there's nothing formal. And I just don't think that decisions should be made on anecdotal observations like that, there should be a formal process. So this resolution really just asks for these solutions to be put into place. And lastly, I don't know if And lastly, um, I don't know if you remembered when they first opened, they had sandwich board signs out that said, do not block driveway. DPP told them to remove that because it was a violation of city code. Um, but the rationale was because signage cannot extend beyond a business's footprint. So therefore, if a benign sign that's really there for a safety measure cannot extend beyond the footprint, then why are we allowing a drive-through line that causes traffic and is a safety hazard to extend beyond the footprint? They purposely bought a small lot. They purposely are in violation of their TNP, um, that causes a safety hazard. So the resolution really just addresses some of these, um, I guess, gaps.
Okay, uh, we'll start with Eric.
Yes, um, so the, the, the lot size, there is a vacant lot directly behind Chick-fil-A that you would access from Kenau Street. Is there any kind of discussions, maybe having them taking over that piece of property somehow changing the flow of traffic? Or a parking lot for them? I don't know if that's ever been brought up, but that vacant lot is right behind them, attached to their property.
That'd be brilliant. I love that solution. I, I think the issue was, so just going along those lines, um, they were granted, uh, they were approved based on the same lot usage, uh, city code. So if it's a fast food restaurant before, which is Burger King, another fast food comes in, they're not required to do any type of traffic study or any mitigation efforts because it's the same lot. Same thing is gonna happen in Waikiki at the old, um, Hard Rock Cafe. A Chick-fil-A is going into there. And the city has rubber stamped that saying same lot usage, even though it wasn't a fast food place before. So there just needs to be some better due diligence upfront, um, on TPP's end. But I like that solution that the back lot could provide a flow-through to Kenau Street.
Uh, I guess, since the question was directly about, um, Chick-fil-A operations, I believe there is somebody on, uh, from Chick-fil-A tonight, uh, Kira? If you'd like to weigh in?
Hi, good evening. Kira Downing. Um, I'm gonna be taking over for, um, for Kevin and, and his team, um, so they can focus on operations at the restaurant. Um, I do believe at the very beginning that Kenau Lot was, was explored as an opportunity to, you know, help with traffic flow and mitigation. Uh, we weren't allowed or Chick-fil-A wasn't granted permission to access that lot or to purchase it. So, um, before they even opened, I know they had looked into that lot. So thanks for bringing that up, Eric. I mean, I think it maybe is a worthwhile discussion to re-explore. Um, as far, yeah, so I think, I think, yeah, I think as to that point, um, I know there was no traffic, to Lindsay's point, there was no traffic management plan that was required. Um, they've done studies and, and obviously DTS has made their determination that, you know, based, whatever data they've collected, however they've collected it, they've made the determination that things are, you know, don't pose a safety concern at this time. Um, and so I know Chick-fil-A just wants to do whatever they can to, to be good neighbors, but they can only control what happens on their property and have already done things to, to, um, increase, you know, vehicle tran, um, vehicle traffic and flow on their property and making sure more cars can come onto their site. So happy to take back any questions, though, to the team.
Okay, thank you very much, Kira. And, uh, I guess Chuck first and then Claire. So Chuck.
Um, yeah, Lindsay, uh, admire your passion and your persistence. I just have a question for clarification. You, you said in the beginning of your presentation that, um, Chick-fil-A is in violation of their traffic study. Who, 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 who made that statement?
So it's not a traffic study. It's called a traffic management plan that was submitted with their permit to DPP. And in that, there's renderings that show how the driveway should be operating, and that is two lanes at all times. So a left and a right lane that go through and it stay, it should stay as two lanes going out. I'm happy to send it to the board for you guys to take a look at. But if they're funneling cars into one lane, um, that's in violation of the plan that was approved. And I just, I do want to add, um, you know, to Kira, that there was a Hoi Newz Now story that ran with reporter Eddie Dowd about the traffic safety issues. And DTS did provide a statement to the station saying that they're aware of issues and they're working with Chick-fil-A. So DTS has contradicted their claims that they are aware of the issues and there are issues to a letter saying that there aren't any. And again, the whole point of that is they're making these decisions based on anecdotal information. If they have an employee going out at seven AM, of course, there's no problem. And so it would be good to have transparency and documentation from the city on that part.
Okay, Claire?
Claire, thank you, Chair. I also admire your persistence and your passion for this project. I would be insane if I couldn't pull into my driveway all the time and had this constant stream of cars. And I know that we explored having two right-turn lanes from Pensacola onto Baritania. Kira, I do recall Kevin telling us that they approached the owner of that Kenau Lot a few times and they, they adamantly refused to allow, uh, usage of that lot for Chick-fil-A's purposes. But would Chick-fil-A be open to talking with DTS and whoever's in charge of creating a second right-turn lane from Pensacola to try and alleviate some of that pressure? Um, because it sounds like DTS needs to have their feet to the, held to the fire a little bit to stop kicking the can down the road. And, uh, but Chick-fil-A should also be actively involved in trying to solve this problem. So would Chick-fil-A be interested in working with DTS and the neighborhood on that second right-turn lane from Pensacola? For one thing.
Uh, Kira?
Yeah, I mean, I can't speak, I mean, I think this is like beyond Zane and, um, Kevin's kind of job description, but I think I can take that back to Chick-fil-A Inc. And I think they would definitely be, you know, interested in, in working with D. I know they're in constant contact with DTS already. Um, so I think they've, they've mentioned this and I think that's definitely worthwhile to explore.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Richard?
You know, I abstained on the, uh, your resolution last time. I would vote for it. You know, I'm trying to remember why I didn't, I didn't like the remove the parking there for the small businesses. So I would vote, I think that was the one thing that kept me from voting for that. So if you, if we can, if you folks are willing to, to take that out, and I gotta read the whole thing again. I think that was the main thing.
I took it out. Um, understandable. I, I think, I just want to clear up last, the, the previous resolution only took off part of the parking because it is dangerous as things queue up with the parked cars. So really, the resolution is, can the city and Chick-fil-A come up with another solution to keep their customers and residents safe absent of removing parking? So that, that part is taken out.
And was that placard, do not block driveway somewhat effective while it was there?
Yes. So if you drive past now, you'll see do not block driveway signs on poles. And that came after some intense advocating to the city because it's, it didn't meet the requirements and who's gonna pay for it and maintain it. And the residents really fought to put those up because we wanted that plus the sandwich board signs. Because depending on the time of day and night, where is the visibility? If there's headlights shining on the sandwich boards, at least there's something there. So we wanted it both there for extra visibility. But DPP said that it violated code, so the sandwich boards had to go.
Now, there must be, we must have some way to, to change that. You know, a sandwich board on a sidewalk is like, it's a technical thing, but there must be some way to change this. We can talk to the, our representatives, our senators, our council people. Because it's, it's a really bad situation. You, you want to be able to get in and out of your driveway, to go to get back to work or get home to cook dinner.
You look like you had something to say, Eric?
Okay. Uh, uh, yeah, this is a really complicated, um, situation, um, from both sides. And, um, you know, it's just, I think these are good discussions, you know, and bringing together everybody, you know, it helps. So, um, you know, for next month, I think, you know, we should have some other ideas, so.
Best, best, best question. Thank you, Chair. Kira, um, I think I read in the resolution that the parking stalls on the premises that were supposed to be for the mobile pickups were, what, what happened to them? Are they being used for employee parking or something? Kira, are you still here?
Yeah, that, I'm here. I, I, unfortunately, because the resolution was posted so late, I wasn't able to like share that with the team and get their feedback. So that was, that was definitely a question I had. I don't know, I think it said that, that those parking stalls have been, um, I don't know what the word was, disengaged or whatever, you know, they've been taken out of the mix. Um,
They're still there.
So, yeah, I don't, yeah, I have, unfortunately, um, wasn't able to get clarity on those items in the resolution due to like, it's, due to the fact that it was posted so late, but I'd be happy to follow up.
Okay, that'll be great. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know what happened to them. Thank you.
Uh, okay, I see Ian.
Thank you very much, too, thanks. You know, I understand, uh, the importance of limiting private businesses from using our sidewalks for signs. Uh, one thought, uh, maybe leaving with my, uh, with our elected representatives is to see if, uh, DTS has the authority to put signs up. I mean, we see an IMC signs that say things like, you know, don't speed here or that have the speed checkers that read your some speed back out. It seems like they have the authority to put signs along the road. Maybe we can get a DTS specific sign for this. Just one thought. Second is, uh, I really want to, uh, thank the residents for this resolution. I think it's been very well thought through. Uh, of course, I, I voted for it last time, but I had those concerns like Richard and others about parking. I think what's laid out here is very good. I do want to highlight, you know, this situation's been disappointing for all of us. But, you know, Chick-fil-A has been in rather good communication with us and updating us. So I think the title that said, uh, that says that the traffic and safety hazards caused by Chick-fil-A might be a little too aggressive in the situation. Um, I, I do actually, I'm gonna go on record, think it's factually true. I, I'm also quite disappointed. I think our board, um, would do well to have a more neutral title just because of the role we play in the community. Uh, that all said, I, I think what I'm reading on this resolution, all the actions called for sound really good. And I look forward to hearing, uh, Chick-fil-A's responses, uh, to these proposals next month. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ian. And do we have any further discussion? Okay, uh, any further discussion from any community members? Okay.
Hello, Nancy Depak Swani. Hello. Um, again, I am very passionate about, uh, public safety and well-being. I've noticed that we do have, uh, some of the issues on the agenda, right? Uh, what we don't have, what I don't see listed is the speed humps specifically. Um, I don't know if you spoke on that earlier. I might have missed it, but I have spoken with some residents on Young Street who have come forward and I'm trying to get them to come down here, but, um, who are very concerned. A woman was telling me recently that she goes out walking her dog. She's on, in the crosswalk. She's been almost hit several times, um, from speeders on Young Street. On, you know, this, this is a problem on Baritania, on Young Street, on King Street. We need to get something out there. Okay, I'm not seeing, this is my sixth month coming to these meetings, okay? And we've got to get something on the books and we've got to get something actually done. Because just last weekend, the weekend before, there were the racers in front of Tipsy Pig. Tipsy Pig has actually posted new videos on their Instagram page showing burnouts, speeding and other things. Um, I've got video, but you can just go out there. They have more events posted on the twenty-second, uh, February twenty-second and March first. They've got these racing club, uh, events posted. Uh, you can go and look on that page and see those. Um, but it's not just them. It's just in general, the safety issues. Um, and it's, it's HPD just keeps saying, well, we don't see it, you know, but it's there every week, week after week after week, day after day. Um, even just going on down Akala Lane and the small lanes, Akala Lane and Palm Drive are turning into really busy, these tiny little lanes are being used. You know, they just speed in circles and, um, people go through there sometimes. It, it seems like, you know, thirty-five, forty miles an hour, they'll speed through those little lanes. And it's just, you know, this whole area, last meeting we were here, we could hear them speeding out here. You know, just as we were talking. Um, it needs to be addressed. We need to get these measure, these, these measures taken seriously. Um, we don't want to wait until more people die out on our roads before we actually put something out there. Like with the fireworks, you know, we talked about it for decades and it took seven people dying to actually get this on the books. And it's, you know, and I'm still hearing fireworks going off. This is mid-February. Um, and I've seen them. Um, and the home, the homeless issue, um, Sakura Terrace closed down, which is on the corner of Palm Drive and King, South King Street. It's right before our properties. Ours is twelve forty-six South King Street and Sakura Terrace Restaurant just right before that. So they closed down and that's turning into a huge hub for drugs and illegal activity every night.
Okay, I will quickly cut you off there. We do have, uh, it's not specifically speed humps, uh, uh, I did put on the agenda to kind of proactively attempt to try and figure something to curb the speeders and all manner of stuff in what is, has been recognized as the most dangerous corridor in this, in the state. So, um, right now, we're still just talking about the, uh, traffic and safety concerns by Chick-fil-A.
Yeah.
So thank you. Uh, we'll come, we'll come back to this, uh, in just a second.
Okay.
Uh, now, if I could recognize, um, okay.
Yeah, I thought we were there.
No, we were, we were still on, we're still on the resolution addressing traffic and safety concerns.
Oh, so sorry.
Yeah, sorry about that. So, um, okay, but, uh, seeing, seeing no other community concerns for that. Uh, thank you so much, Lindsay, and we'll go ahead and, uh, continue the discussion next time for sure. And, uh, now we'll just go straight into, uh, with a great opening by Nancy for discussion and motion to support traffic safety measures on Baritania Street and King Street between Bonhoez Street and Ward Avenue.
That, that is involved with Chick-fil-A too, because they've got,
Yes.
they've got the parking and the, the traffic issues. And, you know, we're having it on King Street. The cars, especially when they have all those events, they park all along King Street. And there are times when they actually block Palm Drive and Akala Lane. They'll park all the way up to, and just, you can just barely get your car through, you know? And sometimes I can't get out of my place either. So I feel for you. Um, but it's, yeah, it's an ongoing issue. It's week after week and there's just, I mean, crime, you know, well-being and safety, those, there's so many issues, but, you know, I'd really like to work with you on that. And, you know, any way I can help, because it's just, it's taking a toll on my health and the people around me. I talk to my neighbors. They're scared to come out, um, because they're scared of retaliation, because I've received retaliation from that business. Um, and you know, if they want to, um, race their cars, there's a time and place for that. I think that needs to be addressed in some other way, you know, making them, giving them a safe place to do that. That's fine, you know, racing cars, okay, cool, but not in our neighborhoods. And we need to fast-track these safety issues so that this isn't, you know, addressed five years from now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, uh, do we have any, uh, do we have any further discussion from any, uh, board members? Richard?
I, I think, yeah, I was, next week, when HPD is here, we need to ask them specifically, you know, what they can do about this. And they need to up enforcement. Is it a problem? And I believe her is, is what she's describing. There are violations that can be tagged.
Eric? Um, and, uh, to your point about, um, you know, Tipsy Pig's web, uh, To your point about um, you know, Tipsy Pig's web Instagram page, a lot of these groups, these car groups, they're, they're posting these, it's four likes a lot of times. They're filming themselves doing these illegal activities on the streets. They do it in my neighborhood on Round Top Drive, where they film themselves going a hundred miles an hour, the whole loop of Townalists. And, and they call it, it's a time trial. They try to beat, there's time. I mean, they're crossing over the lanes. I've almost been hit by my, putting my trash can on the street multiple times. It's the same exact group of people on your neighborhood, they're in my neighborhood, so it's all connected. They have different Instagram pages. I have a lot of them, you know, Eight-O-H Streets is one of them. That uh is a big promoter of their content. And, and I get their point is, we don't have a racetrack, we don't have an outlet for them to do this in a safe and nice manner. But it still doesn't mean they're allowed to do it then in neighborhoods where it's completely illegal. So I, I feel you and I'm all for speed humps. I've been advocating from, in my neighborhood on Round Top Drive. Uh, especially in the, and so because once, once they are over an area, they just move on to another area because they know the police will be coming soon. So they'll do Townalists and then they'll go back down to another neighborhood. And it's just a constant, every night, multiple times throughout the night.
And it's, you know, there's small children that live right behind us. I'm sure, you know, everyone has, I mean, there's families, it's not just me. It's not just you, there's families, there's our, there's a Kupuna building right across the street from, from us. They, you know, the police might come out if we call them, but by the time they get there, you know, all they gotta do is shut off their engine. And then HPD says, oh, well, we didn't see it. You know, that's not helpful. It's we don't want to see tragedies. You know, it's, it's affecting, it affects our work life, our home life, it affects the people around us. Um, I don't sleep, I don't know about you, but I don't sleep. There's, on Saturday nights, I, I mean, I'm up until two, three in the morning every weekend because I just, it's impossible. You know, I'm worried about the house. The noise, I can't, you know, I can't go to sleep. But anyway, focusing. We've got to get that. We've got to get that down. We've got to get the speed humps, whatever it takes, traffic cameras. You know, I never used to be for ta, traffic cameras. And now I'm like, you know what? Let's do it. Let's do it at the parks. Let's do it in the streets. Let's do whatever we need to, whatever we need to do. Let's, let's push that. It's, it's just getting out of control. And we can address giving them a place to have these fun events. You know, we can put that on the books. Let's find a place for them to have that outlet. Turn a negative into a positive.
Richard?
Have you ever seen HPD, have you witnessed them talking to these people? They just walk away.
The only time uh recently, they put up a sign, I'm sure a couple of you, if you've gone on their website, have seen it, and they're referring to me. So I'm taking them to court. Um, I don't know if you want me to say what's on the sign, because it's not very nice. But um, they've actually made two signs targeting me directly and hung it outside of their business. Yeah, if you go on their Instagram, uh Tipsy Pig, because they're part of these car club things. And so when I called about the sign, then I spoke with HPD and they spoke with them directly, but that was the only time. There was once when I called, uh, the officer was fair, fair something, anyway. They were drinking on my property. And, you know, they had the bottles and everything, so I called HPD and the officer literally turned his back to them and talked to me for fifteen minutes. And I said, just turn around, turn around and look that way and you'll see what they're doing. And he would not turn around. And it blew my mind, you know? And I've seen them, I've seen the officers drive by while there was burnouts going on. And I'm not, I am pro uh HPD. I love them. These are hard workers, we're short-staffed, I get that. But when I see illegal activity and they're right there, that just kills me.
Yep. Uh, in the interest of time, I'll recognize Harris. And then I believe we'll have to call it there.
And there's that affordable, um, affordable building going up on P E Koi and Young Street, which is under permit approval and funding approval right now or something like that. I think this month they're working on getting the uh applications approved and all that. But if, when that building starts being constructed, it's supposed to be finished by twenty-twenty-eight. That whole corner, P E Koi and Young is gonna be a mess. So that's got to get on the books too.
Okay, uh, okay, so we got another community member who'd like to speak too. Well, like I said, we'll go, go with Harris, we'll go with uh you. Sorry, I'm blanking on your name super hard now. And then uh we'll move on. Harris?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, and thank you Nancy for continuing to share your concerns and uh really appreciate your patience. It's, you know, the process that we've, this has been on the Nice Neighborhoods Committee and it's on the agenda. And so as a follow-up, uh, we brought this to the Liquor Commission. And the Liquor Commission followed up and uh Glenn Nishigata, he will be uh joining the Monday meeting. And they receive all the videos and so the Liquor Commission is aware of it, it's on their radar in terms of uh what was shared with them. And what they wrote to me uh was that uh they would like to schedule a meeting, uh, but also probably in coordination with HPD. And so that's our next step. So I think in terms of the bar, in terms of the speeding, the racing, all of the, the, the noise and those things, I think we'll, we'll be methodically working on that on your behalf. The only thing that we don't have is the speed bumps. And the speed bumps is something probably different that, that has to be taken. But in terms of addressing the, the safety issues that you just mentioned, so um there'll be uh so anybody that's interested, they'll, they'll, they'll be participating in next Monday's uh Nice Neighborhoods Committee. Thank you.
Okay.
So as Harris mentioned earlier about our last meeting uh last month uh in front of building fourteen twenty-seven. Those two, Harris, Chuck. There for coming down and, you know, having HPD and everybody there and, you know, and getting all the neighbors together. What was disappointing was that, you know, Paul Lamb didn't show up and his excuse was that he didn't have enough time or whatever.
Just to clarify, so this is for community concerns and not for traffic, okay?
Correct. Oh, what are we, we start?
If that's the case, we'll go ahead and move on to community concerns. Continue, sorry.
Yeah, so, you know, as, as we got through this meeting, um, Paul Lamb was informed a week earlier, cleaned the building up, took him three days to do this, yet he didn't show up to talk to the neighbors. And, you know, definitely not being a good steward of being this, you know, in our neighborhood and all the chaos and issues we're having. And, and that has to be an issue if he's gonna be keep, continuing to build other uh buildings like this in a neighborhood and not be part of a good steward for the neighbors. I mean, we're here to talk to him, talk to everybody, the police were there, our representatives were there, was great, you know? And what I wanted to make sure that, uh, we're having another one May first, I mean, March first, my bad, March first, nine AM. Uh, and to do a follow-up and just letting them know because Paul Lamb is just not being a good steward. And he wants to build all these affordable units in the, in our neighborhoods. And if he's not gonna be part of this solution, like I said about pausing and, you know, understanding what's going on. He needs to be here, he needs to be here at these meetings as well as anything that's going on with his buildings that he's building up. Because how is this gonna keep on going bad? And, and I just wanted to thank, you know, Harris and everybody that showed up. Uh, and we will be getting more neighbors together to make sure that uh they'll be there and, and have, you know, expressed that. I did talk to Savio, uh, you know, and all these other people that, you know, we have some concerns with, but it just, it's just not, you know, a good uh neighbor as he has built to corrupt our, our neighborhood and not be part of a solution. And that's all we're looking at. But it would be nice to continue that. And if he's actually listening out there, he should be part of this uh forum and help us improve the neighborhood or get it back to where it was. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And I will uh call it, uh, we'll move on from community concerns uh from residents there. Uh, because I see Della Bellotti on, so we'll go ahead and circle back to Della, Della's report.
Hi, thank you for having me. Um, we are in our five um day recess. Again, I'm sorry, I can't turn on my video now, I'm not in a, in a, in a good place to do that. The state representative for the area and um we are in the depths of um going through our final reading of bills before lateral. In addition, our finance committees and our backend committees, I'm on the judiciary committee, uh, we are doing our final readings of bills. The budget is consuming a lot of our thoughts um at the moment as we see the many executive orders coming out from the federal administration. And so there's a lot of focus on how are we going to ensure that um our services are maintained, our core services are maintained uh as well as um all of the important initiatives we have to address issues pressing um upon the community. Nathan, Chair, I, I'm available for questions. Um, I, I've been listening and um being part of some of the meetings that are happening in the community uh and continue to be here to um hopefully help facilitate the, the solutions we need in the community.
Okay, thank you very much, Della. Uh, in the interest of time, if anyone has any uh concerns, if you could address them to uh Della outside the, the meeting. Uh, thank you very much, Della.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to, well, we'll push past board community reports. The Makiki Lower Punch Bowl and the Neighborhood Security Watch with Chuck. Uh, and then John Steelquist is not here for Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization. Board announcements, the next meeting. The Makiki Lower Punch Bowl Townalists Neighborhood Board number ten is scheduled to meet on Thursday, March twentieth, twenty-twenty-five at six PM at Makiki District Park and via, and online via WebX. The meetings can be viewed on Olelo Focus Forty-nine on the first Friday at nine PM and third Sunday at three PM. Uh, follow us at www.facebook.com/makikienb and visit www.honolulu.gov/nco, NB ten for Makiki Neighborhood Board info. Oh, uh oh, yeah. Uh, yes, so tomorrow is the deadline for uh candidate, or submitting the, your candidacy for the neighborhood board. No exceptions, do it before four-thirty PM. Uh, go to the website, uh, yeah, honolulu.gov/nco and down at the bottom, there's the big link for elections and then it'll take you to yeah, so we only, so for how bad it is, we only have two of us running for six sub, six seats in sub-district one, so we got some work to do. So yeah, uh, apply. Thank you very much. Okay, and uh motion to adjourn? Okay, uh, and yep, so Harris. Motions and we'll go ahead and adjourn at eight twenty-four.